Okay, we've got nineteen hundred and seventy seven PM. It's Doctor January, this is our first council meeting for two thousand and twelve. I would ask you all to bear with us a little bit, we have some administrative things here. I'm gonna put the lawyer to keep us on track and make sure we're doing it right. We'll try and get through this as quick as possible. Uh, I need a motion to call for...
I need a motion to approve.
Second.
Third.
On favor? All right, vote. Okay. At this time, we will have the oath of office of the newly-elected officials will be administered by Judge Howard.
Good evening, it's an honor to be here today, tonight, and I know that there may be a special person or two that you may, that the newly-elected candidates may want to have up there with them. If you want to invite them around at this point, I thought it might be easier if I stay here and administer the oath and if y'all stand there whatever it should be. Alright, if everybody's ready to have it, the candidates would raise their right hand. We're going to do this collectively. Do you, Robin Bushman, Richard Steinberg, and Alfonso Thomas solemnly swear affirm that you will faithfully perform the duties as a council member of the city of Stockbridge, and that you will, to the best of your ability, support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the state of Georgia and of the United States of America? Do you further affirm that upon assumption of this office that you will not hold any unaccounted-for public money due and payable to the state, any political subdivision of the state, the city of Stockbridge, or any authority thereof, nor are you holding the holder of any other office of trust of the government of the United States of this state, or any foreign state, as prescribed by the laws of the state of Georgia? And do you solemnly affirm that you are fully qualified under the Constitution and the laws of this state to hold the office of council member, and that you have been a resident of the city of Stockbridge for the entire period of time required by the Constitution and the laws of the state of Georgia? And you solemnly swear affirm that you will perform the duties of your office in the best interest of the city of Stockbridge, and to the best of your ability, without fear, favor, affection, reward, or expectation thereof? Do you so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
This time we're gonna have the indication, and I'm gonna ask, Dr. Brier, someone to give the indication.
I'm gonna ask everyone if they don't mind standing in the seat for just a moment. This is a sacred year, and we get it. And I'd like to just do something, if you're not your neighbor, if you're not your wife, and say, "God loves you, and so do I." And that's a great way to start. However, we recognize God supremely, that's correct. General God, we stand before you this evening on this new year, and we recognize the power and authority of this city, of this council, and the mayor, and all the people who work for us, the citizenry. And we ask that one word will dominate our efforts this year: harmony. For we have a one objective: to make this town, this city, a better place to live in for all of the citizenry. And so we engage to do that, we engage to do it through the tenets of our religion, our faith, whatever it is that governs us to be better people, and to be more homogeneous, and to be more harmonious in our everyday, and to be above board, not cutthroat, not descending, not loud, but always ready to talk, to discuss. We pray this in your name, amen.
This time I have a little rice, you can pledge your gift. And let me remind you, those little...
I'm trying to stare.
...how many of you salute, you don't turn around, and do the crossbow show. We're going the correct way.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to your republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Attorney, quickly here, I need a motion to approve this special call meeting minutes at twelve, two, two zero eleven. Make a motion.
Right.
Any discussion? On favor? All right, vote, thank you. I need a motion to approve the regular council meeting minutes at twelve, twelve, twenty eleven.
I'll make a motion.
Need a second.
A second.
Any discussion? On favor? All right, vote, thank you. Mr. Mayor, uh, welcome the guest right now. Mr. Mayor, and I'll recognize you a minute, Mr. Gavitt, that's our guy. But now, for the guest, I want to tell you, this is your, this is your city, this is your business and stuff here, and this is what you elected, we appreciate everybody coming out and supporting everybody. And with the new council here, there's gonna be different things, but I think the city's gonna be moving forward and everything, and I'm just asking everybody to bear with it, and we will try and get through with it there. On the agenda that you have, the thought to get a cop out there, I want to go ahead and tell you on the old business, the item number one that we have been working to top the twenty twelve budget for a year.
Mr. Mayor, I have a point of order, now I ask my council to recognize me, sir.
I'll recognize you when I finish my speech, you're just like a...
You can continue without recognizing me onto the whole agenda, I'm going to ask you...
I'm gonna give you your second, let me finish.
Go ahead, sir, for the second time, go ahead, sir.
And so my recommendation will be, so you don't think somebody's trying to hide something, do anything else. I had a lot of people that were asking questions, and I got phone calls and everything else about that budget. I have, I can promise you, and most of you that talked to me, the budget, we like the budget, you like the budget. I have talked with council, the budget is okay, it's legally passable, and we don't need to discuss that item on there at that time. So I'm gonna turn around, and I'll ask for the amended budget, amend the agenda, then we take item number one off. To tie a motion, take item number one off.
I so vote.
Do I have a second?
No.
Any discussion? No discussion, on favor? There are even...
Yeah.
Four. And opposed? Now, before we move on, Mr. Allen, I will now recognize you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The point my, uh, want to be recognized is, we have a ton of items on the event, uh, you know, agenda tonight, and to try to do things along this discipline, and it can be key from having to do multiple amendments, and, uh, not show a nice flow of business, I would like to ask the council to support, uh, the amended, uh, the agenda that I have presented here.
They have it. How long's this one, Derek?
About, uh... About three hours.
About three hours. This is the same thing, I ask again, we're gonna have to work on it, council, please. I am the mayor, you don't have to like me, but respect me, please. Let me see, well, this is the first time I've seen it, folks, so I'm gonna ask you to...
I'd like to ask that you be more forthright with that statement, sir. You and I spoke on the phone yesterday for two and a half hours. You and I had spoken in comparison with other members of this caucus beforehand. I was trying to negotiate in this decision, make this a smooth, uh, meeting time. You have not recognized the wishes of, you know, very few of any of the items that you brought forth, sir, so that is why we have discussed in trying to make this not have any more interruptions for the evening, go with you forward, respectful, smooth manner. So I would like to ask support from my council if they would amend the agenda with the amended agenda presented to you, sir.
The, um, we have copies of the...
Can't we provide, if they want a hard copy, another later, later, you can't do it.
Can't do it.
I'm sorry, I apologize, it's one of them, you know, see, I'm, I'm only the mayor, I can't control it. Can you make a motion, Mr. Allen?
Yes, sir, I am.
I second the motion. Any discussion? On favor? One, two, four, opposed? Okay. Anybody else you got to...
Uh, no, sir, that's, uh, we're going to take care of any amendments from the council this evening, so I don't have to process it.
And for the councils, as you see, there is difference, I say, that's what creates about America. Everybody gets to turn around and force their penny. You're not gonna have everybody in a green flag, and you're trying to force it out. If you want people to protest, go down there, and I will, we'll be able to get things a little bit smoother on here. So with this amended agenda, as y'all see, item number one, what I can, is... Is this off, you marked, when you hit something, you marked, this is off? The item number one here is a resolution to confirm the city administrator Ray Gibson to a month-to-month contract with the city of Stockbridge. I think that's already, Mr. Welch, can you enlighten me? We got, we gave him a contract back in December for ninety days.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, that's right.
Mr. Mayor, do you know what this one is, this resolution number one?
Yes, sir, for me. Um, there was controversy around the old council actions, um, and what we discussed as council is the contract that, uh, Mr. Gibson's hiring under, has language in it that says, day-to-day, month-to-month. We didn't want to have any obscure interpretation there, so we wanted to try to mirror the wishes of this council, more mirror what's been in the contract. So the resolution, my motion is to make a resolution for city administrator Ray Gibson to go to a month-to-month contract.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, discussion is on here, folks up here, check the charter. This is again, the council people trying to up my power. You read the charter, it says, the mayor appoints, and they confirm. And when we get to that, that they have come to one round, again, trying to force things their way, they're bound and determined, come around and take the power away. We're gonna go ahead and move on of this, we're gonna vote, you just ask, that's why I asked y'all, put cheeks in the seats and watch 'em vote, because they're gonna do what they wanna do, and ignore the powers, or ignore the, uh, what's in the charter. So I call, you got a second? Any more discussion? All in favor? One, two, three, four, opposed? Okay. There's no blue business. Uh, item number two, is the selection of the mayor pro temp. Do I have a motion to the mayor pro temp?
I'll make a motion. Mark, tell him.
Do I have a second?
I second it.
Any discussion? On favor? Two, three, four, all opposed? Thank you. Item number three, is council appointed by a slate. Uh, that's city clerk Nicole Vasquez, treasurer David Milliron, city attorney Jack Hamcrum, chairman Matthew Gary, municipal court judge Ted Eccles, auditor Miller, Edward CTA Moore and Jenkins. Do I have a motion? Except that slate.
I make a motion to accept that slate.
Silence. Any discussion? All in favor? Opposed?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Thomas?
I'd like to, I'd like to nominate Vanessa Holliday.
Okay, the motion, Mr. Allen, Mr. Thomas elected to nominate Vanessa Holliday for city clerk. A second? Second? Any discussion? Motion failed. Okay, we're moving to action number four. Mayor appointing associate municipal court judge. This is the first time I've seen this, I can't make a line of... Where is this whatsoever? Mr. Allen, you need to just...
The appointment should be, you can make an appointment, but actual judge, associate judges are appointed by the council, our chart is that that's the case. I might have seen this either, so I'm, I agree, this could be the first time, and... You will just a second.
I understand, we're marking that discussion, and we're talking with, uh...
Yeah, we did discuss all of this, and we're, I can say, in a way, in the end, our council, I understood that the only, that the charter gives you as mayor, all appointments of the city under charter, except otherwise stated in the charter. And to the abilities I've done, and then actually, if the council were to find that were done in item three, in the slate format, if there's any additional positions, uh, that we have the ability to appoint, then I'm a different kind of, yes, I'm a certain person.
The, under your section five eleven of your city charter, some program be signed as the appointment authority to the city council for all judges in the city. So, uh, this is the body for all these make-up decisions, who will be opinionated judges of the city, chief judge or associate judge, this body should make that decision.
And we have deferred later, the best we can, I don't have a...
No, as far as the associate judge, uh, if you wish to fill that position, late in the day, hopefully you fill the current position, which you did with the slate. Uh, if you need to appoint associate, associate to do that later.
Okay.
So I think that's a clarification. What is that, is it, is that also curious for you solicitor and assistant solicitor?
The, uh, those, the needs of all your, uh, one, or point of individuals, need to be done. Right now, currently, the solicitor is the, uh, is the city law firm. So if you wish, the current, the appointed city attorney to do that, and that would be their obligation to serve as solicitor, that's under your statute, that's under your, uh, section four point twelve.
So all three of these positions are council appointed?
You'll see, you'll see that the city attorney may be the prosecuting officer of the court of his report. So in that code segment, in that charter section, uh, that, that would be the solicitor in the city. So as I'm saying, it may be, you may choose the other one.
So those three are the council, is not an award of the one, is what you're gonna make now?
Yes, that's right, they, these are city council positions so far. So if you wish to nominate someone for that position, solicitor other than your city attorney, you may do so, your charter gives you the authority, it's a net, gives you permission to determine who will be the solicitor, prosecuting attorney. That traditionally has been the city attorney role, but it doesn't happen.
But I found it amazing that you're not just gonna defer it, maybe...
We did, the, we definitely did the solicitor position, I didn't realize that he's... Under to the associate municipal court judge, or the associate solicitor, was the council.
So am I appointing a solicitor?
May, may, sir, some hard decision, Dan, I'm...
Yeah, I would like to appoint the, uh, Kisha Gant, who's the ethics attorney for the city right now.
That would be good upon, it's still, still to be approved.
So I have a motion to, we're not gonna approve, but now the associate municipal court judge, associate solicitor, has completed approval of Kisha Gant as the city's solicitor. I have a motion.
I have a motion, but I can't get into the city's solicitor.
I'll second it.
Any discussion? On favor? Two, three, four, all right, vote, thank you. Okay, item number five is committee appointments. Um, committee appointments, it says, uh, the mayor shall make the committee appointments. Uh, to give you, when I first took over, there was eight committees. Uh, basically, they didn't meet in thirty years, we cut down to five, and some different ones, and I appointed them on there, it says in the charter that they serve the pleasure of the mayor. Uh, in the two years there, we've had some differences up there, so I thought, well, I take the blame for their not following the guidelines, what I thought they, I wanted them to do. So I've come up with, for right now, seven committees, that I would not, which will focus them directly on what we're needing to do, and entertain, and some other committees on there. The committees I have, the Avra House of After-School Police Services Committee, I have a Senior Services Committee, I have a Historical Association Committee, I have a Community Gardens Committee, I have a Cemetery Committee, I have a Link Committee, which is our, after, that goes out, brochure, and I have a Sidewalk Committee. Those are seven committees at this time, I'll entertain, if anybody wants to serve on them, that, and maybe anybody serving on, on those, Mr. Allen.
Um, Walter Redd, can I read in the charter that the mayor does make a committee appointment unless otherwise decided by council? And certainly don't want to feed on some of the, uh, appointments here. But you have appointed five, you took that eight, down to five, you and I would actually add dialogue about that prior to, you know, reducing from eight committees to five. Certainly, I have to agree that, uh, there's room for improvement, no matter what committees or what services are trying to be done, and that we, you know, all committees, I mean, did the best of their ability to do your beckoning and beckoning of our community, but I find it missed, and it does give the council the ability to do by ballot the, uh, committee appointments. Not trying to take away from what you just stated, we would just like to reiterate and continue to participate in the five that have been established. And we have a slate that I would like to bring your attention, and make a motion about that, to accept those for public works, uh, safety, public safety, um, community relations, finance committee, and bill of business.
Let me, let me set this, explain to everybody, uh, I try and delegate now. Uh, those five committees, in my twenty-four months, I have yet to have five written reports or anything come back. I want to, like, give you a task, can you, you have a community relations committee, I would expect you would come back and talk to me, and tell me, we like this, or we don't like that. An example, I asked, I put in the budget, and for the committee, I asked for an after-school program. Mr. Allen, come to me, our first thing we went through two years ago, at Mayor's Day, they had an after-school program. It was top, presented by the city mayor, the city Savannah mayor, Douglasville Chief of Police, all many nonprofit groups, some church group was the fourth of them. Four different programs, nobody was an educator or a boarder in education. All I find was that committee came back to me, I did it the first year of a hundred thousand, I did it this year of a hundred and fifty, and I find out, after, when we're doing the budget cuts, and Mr. Allen goes, well, we feel like if they have the school program as a school responsibility. And I was shocked, that's Mark, listen to what the words say, after school. This is the school, we went to that same conference, and listen, if he, if he came back to me and asked, what do you mean by after school? Folks, if you don't believe it, we got a gang problem, probably some of y'all's TVs are missing while you're up here, to go down and kick in, take your flat-screen TV. We have a gang problem. How we address it, whether it's the church groups, nonprofit groups, the police, we use government or the city, I was trying to get them to think out of the box, because that's my pledge that I gave y'all two years ago, that we're gonna do something for you, and address crime in after-school program. Two years, I never heard nothing, and they're all, so what I've said, I take the blame that I didn't give them the proper focus. So right now, I understand those, and I will, it's one of those when you, you didn't give your children right guidance, okay, I bring it back, and I'll get more specific, and I'll start giving them more as they come. But I can't turn around and see them with the committees that we have, until they at least respect what you see, until they respect my office and position, at least feed back to me, that when you come in here, give me this, this is the continuation of the last council. And I don't think, it's right, whether you like me or not, that's, you should respect the position. We have people in here, we have staff in here, I can, do not say that they exclude me on emails and everything else. I should be able to know what's going on, and when I find out after the fact, it's upsetting to me.
I just want to say something, I haven't recognized you yet, Mr. Will, Mrs. Ball, and you.
Well, Mr. Gibson, don't interrupt.
Okay, when you're done, I'll recognize you.
So that's, we have not established, and none of this council has approached me, that you have a list that you sent. This is again, the first time I've seen it, so we wouldn't have this dialogue, and looks a bit like we're not getting along, wouldn't it be nice if somebody would have contacted the mayor and tell me, weeks ago, I tried to get them to tell me and meet with me, what committees do you want to...
Mr. Mayor.
And none of them have ever met with me or told me.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Gibson, Mr. Gibson's recognized.
Mayor, I'd like to say that you're back at the two-way street. I felt that, that's, I've been here two years, you're disrespected for two years. And you're talking about an after-school program. Mayor, I believe the after-school program, you're thinking of the ropes...
Mayor, I believe the after-school program, you're thinking of the ropes course that would be run and operated by you. You did take me on a tour of one in two years, and you said you wanted to start up, so, I think we got the platform wrong with the way you're describing it here. Now, if we all sat down together in a room and came up with an idea and a game plan, that'd be a different story, we could all come here and then talk about it. But I think you're putting down the rest of council, I don't really appreciate that being a staff member, and I just want to stick up for them.
No.
Appreciate the time.
I'll address Mr. Gibson's statement. Mr. Gibson was hired in a position that was authorized, but no way they have his assistance, so he may not.
Mr. Gibson, yes, sir. I think we need to stay on the task, this is getting off task.
Mr. Gibson, talk about this.
Against the public, I think we need to get back to the task at hand, not a personal attack against Mr. Gibson or anyone else that may say something derogatory. You're speaking in defense. Let me get back to this point, I'm going to be very firm with you, sir. I just told you I spent four and a half hours with you, for you to sit here and mislead this public, that we have not been communicating with you and willing to listen. Last night in our conversation, sir, I asked you ten questions, you answered none of them. So, for you to sit here and say, compare us to children or schoolchildren, you gave a pass to it, is a bit embarrassing. And I would ask that you address us with the same respect as I would let you officially as you are, sir.
I have never seen this live.
We just, I tried to do this seventy last night, sir, I'm sick of you telling me that you did not discuss that, just continue to lie to me and people.
Let, let's get down to it. So, we have agenda, we have the opportunity here, we need to through four, agenda, you have nominees, addressing the providing also allows him to recognize you, forward. He uses to recognize you, then you can motion to, uh, point, Mr. Wilson. Organized, well, mayor, uh, process, we get to this night, I think I cover as a council, I'm looking forward to going out with your families, celebrate.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bush.
I did email you two, three days ago, and expressed my desires on the committees that I wanted to be on, and you never responded.
I can't respond to one person, if the council would have told me, I can't assign one person, if the council would respond and tell me, here's the committees that we'd like to serve on, I would have entertained it. If nobody provides me any information until I get here. So, I, I come with those seven committees on here, and he's what you've got, it's I have these seven committees about.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like. I have seven committees listed.
Excuse me, for a minute?
Yes, yes, Mr. Mayor, I have seven committees listed down here, the chief recommended, and they're, uh, for the five that Mr. Alcon recommended. We need a motion to establish the existing committees, and also need to establish who will serve on them. That will need to be done by separate motion, all of which needs to be approved by councils.
So, I, I don't have a problem.
You appoint, you appoint, you're going to establish committees within this body, except, except those committees on, under your, under section, uh, uh, two point zero four, point two, one, zero. It's gonna be a long time to look at. Uh, it was the appointment committee, and it's set first rate of the, of the mayor, council, county, your, will establish, uh, the committees. Uh, as far as the individual that serves on those committees, the council has to serve, determine who will serve, committees that will be established. And I believe the mayor will get the authority to appoint those individuals that will serve on them, but they need the qualifications of two point zero two, 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 zero.
It's gonna take a while, and we, can, can this be done off, those seven, I now see this, can this be done off, and we come back and turn around and put them on?
You, you can, you can entertain a motion for, to take this item to later time or later date. You should go ahead and establish the committees, though, because it does fall for being done in the first rate of the meeting. So, you should try to, tonight, establish the committees that you want to have as a city, then the important process to prefer, uh, limited. Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
Say anything about committee's performance. And I think going forward, and I express this to everyone here, that it's a slap in my face if anyone have discussions about city matters, and I'm not included in that. And this is why you made that call to me at four o'clock today about this, because you knew if I got here tonight at seven o'clock and was presented with this, I would raise hell again. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to address the, uh, this thing here. You, you, let me finish with this, please, sir. I agree that I reached out to you because you were left out now on those, and I promised you then that we, I would never leave you out again. But, do you think I'm gonna leave you a twelve-hour conversation on a recording tape to discuss and have dialogue over topics that need to be discussed? This is one of many that we need to discuss since we had our meeting on Friday. So, you are correct, you were left out at the first meeting, to be honest with you. But you have, I have reached out to you since then, and will continue to do so even at this night.
Mr. Welch.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. If we could just get back to the point, and the question is, who has the authority to appoint committees? And as I was to go back to your ordinances that deal with the government authority of the city of Stockbridge. Under your section two point zero four, point zero six there, it is here that the mayor or the chairman has authority to appoint council committees of the council, so they'll be made up of this council. Um, and of that council, unless, and the ordinance also says unless the council directs our votes. So what you have is, Mayor, you're presenting the committees that you want to see happen. That's fine, and you have all the authority to do that. If the council as a group decides that you wish to direct otherwise as the formation of committees, then you may override that decision. But, or you can affirm his decision. Either way, the bottom line is that at this meeting, you're the person who established your committees. The mayor has listed seven committees that he wants to establish. Someone needs to make a motion to accept those committees, a motion to modify them that list he presented, a motion to do something different. But the point of order at this juncture needs to be a motion on a set of committees. Once that motion is made, it needs to be due a second. If it doesn't fail, some other motion can come forward. Otherwise, it's a second, and then you have the discussion about that particular motion. But we could go on all night about the conversations that you have had or haven't had, the emails you've gotten, you have not gotten. Let's keep going ad nauseam, and I think we need to go back to what we were on this issue. I'm sorry, sir.
Thank you. I have a motion for the committee, as I presented.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
I motion that this issue be settled.
That's personal, okay.
I said it.
Second, under the script. Okay. Second. All clear. One, two, three, go. Sorry, your time is on.
Uh, finding a zoning, we have none. Item number six is a proclamation of honorers, Gibson, Stockbridge, Dr. Mike Moon.
As Mayor, unfortunately at this time, the proclamation is not available. But I would like to go ahead and recognize very good friends in the city, somebody who's worked with the governor of our city, our community, our county, our state tirelessly, and is a great gentleman besides. So I would like to go ahead and make the proclamation orally to recognize Dr. Moon as a honorary citizen of Stockbridge.
Look, we have a second. Sir. Any discussion on favor? Two, eight, five. And, uh, Dr. Moon, just, uh, I've seen it earlier, but just exactly what happened is what I knew was gonna happen last week. We didn't have time to get things organized, and that's why I saw you here, because all this stuff I, I was told was gonna be coming over, and I apologize, it will be a nice crankup and get done if we just slow down, take a deep breath, and take the right procedures instead of the enforcement thing. Which is a great job, but you know where I need you. Thank you.
Resolution ordinances and agreements, item number seven, presented by Ray Gibson, City Administrator, resolution to month-to-month code enforcement services for the city's stockards to be provided by the Henry County Code Enforcement Office. Mr. Gibson.
Mayor Council, this resolution before you is to...
Can't hear it.
Mayor Council, this resolution before you is to enter into a month-to-month agreement with code enforcement services with the Henry County. Talked to Wood Sanders, the county manager, and he's, uh, in agreeance with this resolution, and it'll have to be approved by the board commissioners.
Switch to Wood Sanders, item number nine. Then you have five.
Mr. Mayor, you have the exhibit A. Do you have the government agreement that you're proofing?
And this one I don't have until today. I just have the motion. I have to start the month-to-month resolution law. We gotta, we gotta...
I do, sir, I do not have it. Which slide?
And this is, I apologize, this is...
Mayor?
Mr. Allen, come on.
Council, I believe we have already entered into the contract in our prior year. How does that affect us moving forward, and you just having to concede and rush on to that business?
If you, if you wish to affirm the existing intergovernmental agreement on a month-to-month basis, then you may do so. Um, my concern is I don't know if that's the intention, is either of our intentions for something different, which would be reflected in a exhibition to this resolution.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Allen.
I'd like to make a motion that we, uh, extend the existing agreement from last year to continue on to a month-to-month, uh, as needed in the city, and it evaluates the need of enforcement.
Now, a second motion. Any discussion?
Mayor?
Mr. Allen.
If I speak, clarify page two minutes. Uh, does your motion, John, want to continue the existing intergovernmental agreement with the county on a month-to-month basis?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? On favor? Two, four, five, so, okay.
Item eight, presented by Ray Gibson, City Administrator, resolution for Falcon Design Consulting of the town.
Mayor Council, this resolution before you is to enter into a private management services agreement with Falcon Design, Falcon Design Group for a fee of eleven thousand, one hundred sixty-two dollars and seventy-six cents, or seven percent of the construction cost. Um, the, a statement in the agreement is not to exceed thirteen thousand dollars. That's number seven, that's original. Number seven, exhibit A is attached.
Mr. Mayor, that also includes a three thousand dollar survey, certainly possible. It does not include that, it's separate. Item is included in your, um, in your agreement, so it is one of the exhibits for compensation. You have a vote in representation agreement with the resolution, as well as the service which is exhibit A, and the compensation which is exhibit B to be included.
Okay, I'm okay with that. You got it. You have a motion. No motion.
Make a question, confirm.
I'm coming, I have a motion. Second. Second. Any discussion? On favor? Two, four, five, over. Okay, item number nine, presented by Ray Gibson, City Administrator, resolution scheduled for the 2012 work sessions for the city. I believe that's number eight, I agree with what you have.
Mayor Council, before you is a table showing the proposed 2012 work session dates to have be held the Tuesday prior to the, uh, council, Monday council being held. As well, you will see dates as far as when items will be due, and it's also outlined throughout the table. And this is put in place in order to keep the format going, so we don't have things coming on last minute. We have a review, signed off on, and the process will be smooth. When it happens to be emergency situations, those are easy to handle, we call council, we take care of those. Um, this is, this will keep us in line in terms of having everything itemized and properly, um, done properly, which will be...
Copy or send over this, Mr. Smith, first on. Sir, copy.
I said, my copy.
You need to make sure we can proceed on the website.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, please. That's another thing, if we can, that part of this, part of this will be two weeks out of the whole thing, items on the agenda, so if citizens can review them, have comments, as well as council give their votes, and within a beat and a half, two weeks, so they can once again ask questions of staff, so everything's clear before we enter the meeting.
Okay, we have a motion for they accept the 2012 work session.
I'm like, morning. I'll say.
Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Gibson, I'd just like to make sure that everybody in your departments feel comfortable with the schedule, that we'll be able to meet, that we won't be changing the schedule.
We will not be changing the schedule.
Thank you.
More discussion? On favor? Two, three, four, five, over. Okay.
Item ten, presented by Smith Welch, weapon whites, the resolution establishes checks honors for the city of Stockbridge. Welch.
Yes. You have a resolution for you to authorize the mayor, chairman of the finance committee, and city clerk to the treasurer. As you've not established a great chairman of the finance committee, you probably should strike that from your, uh, resolution, to have the mayor, city clerk, treasurer, uh, as being authorized to sign, uh, checks on behalf of the, uh, city of Stockbridge, and that will need to be, uh, that needs to be changed. It's prudent to make a motion to, uh, accept the resolution as it is with the change. I mentioned striking the chairman of the finance committee, and then you can go back and change that, which you identify committee.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Allen.
Um, I was gonna ask a point there, because in that ordinance, it states the actual city administrator as well, so I didn't have to, didn't I hear that read on the list, because that's still in there? If that's not updated, then, then you can look at that as well, as to whether I had advertising it correctly online.
The, with respect to this resolution, the individual listed there with the mayor, chairman of the finance committee, and city clerk to the treasurer.
Uh, left on the Lovejoy Street, left on the Bird, back to Love, to North Berry, to Nolan, to Todd Street, and to First Avenue, we did that before Chapel. One of the reasons we're moving to Chapel, that was church where, uh, where Dr. Ch, well, where Dr. T. C. had an interest in ministry, and actually had his trial surgery at that church, long before it was Chapel, uh, Chapel, not remember this church. So long way, long route, only specific markers that will, will, will take, uh, specific, uh, historical sites, so once you have full purposes, you can bring your body and play from that, and come back to, to Stockbridge, to, uh, to, uh...
Now, if I ask you, if y'all just started out there in the park a lot?
Right, yes.
And you're not using, you don't, you don't wanna use the city, and so...
Not, what, what we would like to do perhaps, is actually, with some, uh, support probably enough to...
Yeah, there'll, there'll be a need for, uh, facilities, and, um, we can arrange a, uh, complete, uh, job, or, uh, prior to, uh, prior to the, uh, 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 uh...
Okay, Mayor. Mr. Stunt, thanks very much for bringing this to our attention, although we should move out a little bit earlier, we've got behind you, give you a little bit more support.
Mayor Stewart has asked us to file the city charter, it's a letter of all, and in that pending, I just wanna make sure that you all filed for an application for the purpose required under item ten point sixteen point oh two oh.
Um, I, I don't know of that being that, uh, as a comparison.
What is that, Mr. Stunt, what is that? Mr. Welch, do you have a, a, a...
Basically, I could, I could try it in here. Uh, what it did does, when anyone has a parade, we call this, uh, the event, we would, uh, ask that, uh, the group come meet the city officials, and outline exactly what you're doing, how the police issue we take care of, all the liability issues, the border bodies, kind of a game plan. I, I, I've met, this, I've heard about this, but I haven't known there was gonna be a run off and fight, so, uh, it's kinda caught me off guard, but that's what, um, Justin Steinberg is mentioning, that you need to come meet with me, and then I make the decision whether or not to support this or not to support it.
So if the one, you didn't do that for the one, uh...
Um, evidently, the, the different communities will, will view these, or, uh, these events as, in different ways, and, um, people are not happy to...
Shall we accommodate?
We'll, we'll, uh, present the information, we'll file it, and we'll offer everything to validate any issues we may have.
Yeah, absolutely, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Allen. Uh, like I said, I mean, I have heard, uh, we mentioned this to me, uh, three months into our first term, uh, that they were, might have been, and I think Mr. Dr. Moon and some others, uh, was doing some background, and so the mayor is very, uh, well, uh, knowledgeable of what's going on here, but we, and I, in pre-utility, that the policy that he quoted, Mr. Steinberg, uh, pointed out, clearly, clearly states that basically, you know, you didn't even need him for us, you just needed to provide the city administrator the information, and, uh, he, he and, uh, administrations, I mean, felt like it was, uh, good, and, you know, we wouldn't even have to come before council, but, uh, I was asking you to make the scheduled meeting with, uh, Mr. Gibson.
We want to do that, but we need, you understand, we just wanted to make sure, to make sure it presented to the council, so he felt, felt, uh, felt all about it, understood our motivation to be able to do something that would benefit from the city. So, thank you very much. We will, we will make it, please.
In that, not to cheat, yeah. Now, you know, get the one up, everything. Um, my business passes request, we have a couple of comments. I see Pastor Bar is next, is that correct?
Yes.
And, uh, Davis, two fifty-one, Monarch Village Way, subject to senior fitness. You have three minutes.
Good evening, Council. Um, and thank you for having me come and present this about senior fitness this evening, and I also would like to introduce you to this making Steve Poole, also is a senior fitness instructor with me on this meeting, and she will be back right after.
Who's she in?
She's back.
Oh, okay.
I put on the spot. And we are instructors for senior fitness, Echo's Gym. Uh, my mission, our mission is to bring, uh, a senior citizen's exercise program to the city of Stockbridge, um, certain those seniors who can't, and/or would feel that exercising in their own community, and a lot of seniors that don't like to come out of their community to, uh, exercise, enhancing our community while sending a message to all that we do care about now. Um, these services will be rendering with, uh, with our four types of exercises, which is endurance, strength, balance, and flexibility. Uh, as a safety measure, chairs are used providing comfort and support for those seniors as they exercise. Uh, also, we offer an easy-to-follow fun workout, increasing their energy and their stamina. While exercising, statistics are proving the longevity of seniors is possible with the proper care of their bodies. This can be achieved through exercising, good eating habits, and good sleeping habits. Our program is designed on a moderate level, enabling seniors to participate regardless of any physical or mental, uh, limitations. Our proven success results have served to help or aid in the weight loss process, reduce the impact of illness and chronic diseases, enhance mobility, flexibility, and balance, keeps them performing well, and, uh, improves their sleep, improves mood, and self-confidence, enhance brain function, keeps the brain active, which can prevent memory loss, uh, cognitive decline, and dementia, provide an understanding of the importance of eating habits, eating healthy. Uh, also, our goal, supply seniors with the necessary tools you need to ensure a longer, stronger life given their movement while engaging in fun activities.
That's three minutes, could you wrap it short?
I'm done, I'm literally done. So, I, we look forward to building this relationship with our seniors, partners, partner with you to, um, ensure learning, giving them something to look forward to, celebrating their longevity in mind, body, and soul. Again, I just want to thank you.
Thank you.
I'm done. And also, I was at, uh, uh...
Senior, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I was at everything, and we take it, uh, our seniors to sign up who are very enthusiastic for it. And I would like to present you with a, okay, and I come and give you each a, or a, uh...
And would be one that, uh, on my list, uh, we have your senior citizens, senior citizens committee, who we help to, uh, that's exactly what I'm, thank you. Okay, next, we have Chip Flannigan, uh, what's the topic? Sorry, Chip, I can't read it. Well, welcome.
Uh, yeah, I just wanted to, uh, address the council and the, and the mayor, uh, and just, you know, as I worked, started working two and a half years ago, uh, to change things in the city, uh, worked directly in four big campaigns, um, and I see changes starting tonight. Uh, I applaud that, hope to see that continue, hope that maybe the working council session can get the agenda upfront in front of the county, uh, city attorney, the new city attorney, um, so that these things can get worked out ahead of time. I think that's probably the worst thing I saw tonight, was agenda forward that wasn't recognized, and caused a lot of problems. Um, we worked hard to get all four of you elected. I hope and pray that as this day goes forward, that we'll continue to seek the changes that we didn't want. Business as usual, if we wanted business as usual, then we would have just let the old people stay. So we expect that our work to come to our fruition. Uh, it is an anti-recoming year, two years to mount, we'll be working at it again. So, uh, appreciate everything you've done tonight, applaud you standing up to get chewed on by citizens for the next two years for some of you, four years for the rest of you, for the new ones, uh, at least, and, uh, please try to work together for the benefit of us. See, the Constitution starts with "we, the people," not "you, the elected." See, it's our responsibility, people ask me every time I talk, "Do you believe in terminus?" Absolutely. I believe it's our responsibility to limit the terms of our elected officials. But welcome, and we're watching.
And, so, just to give, uh, for everybody, it don't, it's not as bad as y'all thought. But one thing we did agree two years ago, I said we were gonna turn around and do is we're gonna have a hundred percent accountability of our property, personnel, equipment. This council has agreed to it, uh, I think, uh, Red Ray, we, last year we met with the people, and I think as Aaron, Henry, I've been right back there to Aaron, we're gonna meet this week and sit down. It's biblical, it's, 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 you would need to do it, it's not a good business practice, and also, and military does it better than anybody else, we're gonna give a hundred percent accountability for it, because it's your money, that you know where everything's at, had on there, so don't take it off or not, here we, we are going, getting that done. Uh, Mr. Kishan, uh, discuss the board of that.
Good evening.
Evening.
First of all, happy new year, the Valentine's Eve special, I want to wish everyone a happy new year, and, uh, thank you for appointing me and voting for me tonight. Um, I serve as the chairman of the Board of Ethics Committee, and currently returns up as of January one. Uh, Mr. Alfred Thompson is now a council member. We also have another position open, um, and my position, apparently, will be open as well. So I'm asking that the, that the council, um, and the mayor is to, uh, appoint a new chair, as well as one person on the board, and the council is to appoint a board member as well. And I just wanted to bring that up front, so that you know, um, it's a fairly new, um, the Board of Ethics, it's fairly new, it's a year old, so we were starting off, and hopefully, um, I heard there were accountability, that's what the Board of Ethics Committee is here for, and it's a building committee, so, um, I'm hoping that you all take some thought and time to elect or appoint new members. Thank you.
Thank you. And, uh, that's, that's, we knew that, uh, not the one of those that would get it all back together, talk something, it'd work out, but we're, we're gonna address that most definitely. Uh, next, we have George's spot, and I think George, you know, I think you talked, uh, appointment contracts, George?
We need the new blood in here, because things have to change.
Pull, pull it down, so you can...
Thank you. Things have to change for the better, and we're hoping that the new city council people that were elected into the city council will give us that ability to do that and unite. You know, the sniping that was going on tonight was not a good thing for me to watch, because you, you have to respect the mayor's office, and the city council must respect that, and we can have seen people up there, the elected party folks here, get into sniping, and not show the unity we need to, uh, cover this city. And I, I'm just recommending that you guys, you know, fix it before you get in front of us, so that you can show the unity that we are looking for, because we're looking for you, between you folks. I just wanna talk a little bit about the appointment process. Um, I don't know what the process is, and you have a whole bunch of appointments here, and I wanna know, first of all, are the, is the, are the residents gonna have a comment on who gets appointed, and is this gonna be transparent?
You have, uh, our, Mr. Bush, you can have.
Mr. George, um, the citizens elected us, and it's clearly in our charter that we made appointments, um, to the best of our abilities, uh, people that we feel are qualified, so at the first council meeting of every year, newly elected officials make the appointments. Um, you know... You know, it's, it's a natural order politics, um, and if these people are very qualified, we decided we were going to take the city in a new direction and make some change, um, and see what we can come about with that change and show unity, something that you guys have wanted quite a long time. So, what I'm trying to say is that the citizens elect us to make those decisions for them.
I understand that, but you know, I've been partying with the city council now for a long time about transparency and open records, and you folks must be together, you know, even though you were elected to represent our community, you have an obligation to be transparent, and if I don't get any kind of sense that you folks are going to communicate with me on this issue, I'm going to take it to the state and ask for a legal opinion about how this happens, because we have rights too. We have rights, we never elected you, but we expect you to also act transparency, because you don't, you don't want to vote on things that you can't understand and, and be able to support it right at the meeting. Every time I come here, there are no legal opinions available, it's all verbal, and, and with all due respect, you folks are new, you need to have stuff in writing, so you can understand it prior to the meeting, not during the meeting, as you're trying to figure out, involving a crucial, crucial issue. That's not fair to you, it's not fair to the residents of the city, that you have to decide on the spot. But they're four o'clock, what's that about? You know, it's not transparent, and you shouldn't be sliding at each other because we didn't get an email, because if this is what it is, we're going to start going away and not come to the meeting, because we don't have the votes. And the other issue that I'm trying to, to talk about here tonight is the issue of moving some of the agenda items, so that the residents have some input. I really don't think it's a good situation, or basically respectable, that all these citizens sit here and have to wait to the last minute to have an opinion, especially when you're making decisions for us. So, I'm asking you to look at, at the process of that, and try to move it along, so that, you know, citizens could have an opinion, because that's what you want, you want the pressure from, from the leaders and support. In order to get that done, you have to get the citizens involved early on, not wait to the last minute to say, okay, now I'm going to have the citizens talk. So, that's my other, my other recommendation, to take a close look at that, because I would appreciate it, I didn't get that at seven o'clock, trying to make this happen in a few minutes. And putting the residents last is not a good way to manage a vote. Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your coming, Stuart, and, uh. We'll talk with the city attorney, and one thing I was thinking, George, because we hear from you all the time, I don't make fun, but, uh, I thought what we might do, if this legal authority, if we have the staff, put their resumes, we'll post their resumes online, so you can see, so you don't make a fake, good old voice, just so people look at and see that the really the right people are qualified for the right jobs on their court. That being said, the next thing is announcements and upcoming meetings, all meetings will be held here at the city hall, except when noted, the urban redevelopment agency meeting is Thursday the ninth at, uh, at five P M. The regular council meeting is Monday the thirteenth, and at seven P M. We're going to work, we're going to send the work that will be posted on, if it's approved. Yeah, we just, we're, we're going to post it out, but it's not on, on this here, again. I apologize, but the general, the stuff on here, I would try, hopefully, we'll all sit down and try and work this stuff out together, because this was not good, the way this stuff was presented, but I apologize, quarter. All city offices will be closed on Monday, January the sixteenth, and Twenty Twelve is very remarkable, and you can do your homework with this.
Um, I just wanted to go on record, uh, on the vote for committee, um, that, the way I read the charter, and I believe that I am staying, or put it against, but I did not put it against that, um, I just want to go on record to say that, uh, it is supposed to, 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 and has to, and like I said, may or shall, so I just want to make sure that I'm on record on this, and ask you to go back into that, to make some good documents.
I would like to ask that Mr. Gibson publish all of our telephone numbers, all of our email addresses, and we encourage you all to communicate with us, hopefully, that will start this dialogue a little proper.
And I concur, I've tried to tell it all that, all along, y'all got mine, I get calls two or nine a morning, I don't mind, only those are the ones I need, but I'm telling you, please call them, call, we don't need one person knowing, we're all here to serve you, so y'all be sure, pass the load, when you notify me, there are all, all the websites, there's something on the website, all the phone numbers, I don't think the phones are out yet, you don't think the phone's yet, but those numbers will be good to be activated shortly, hopefully, this week, the emails are good, and, uh, converse with us, tell us what's going on, because we work for you, you're the bosses. And with that being said, I need a motion to adjourn.
Michael Morgan, adjourn.
I second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor? Two, four, not vote. Motion, yes, it is adjourned. Thank you much. You have a good day.